All meeting of the city council, April 25, 2011 to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Teresinski?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Gallagher?
Here.
Neener?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Thank you, Steve. We have several considerations tonight. The first one is a consideration of a resident police officer program. Chief, you're going to lead us on this one?
Mayor, Council, it's my pleasure to bring forth an idea that the city manager and I have been speaking of for some time. And this has to do with the resident, neighborhood resident officer program. As you know, we've had two types of programs, well, a few types of programs, but one being the Neighborhood Watch Program, another one being Take Home Squad Car Program. We have several squad cars that officers take home so they're visible in the neighborhoods, as well as the low-income resident officer program where we have an officer staying at 14th and Lewis in DeKalb County in partnership with the DeKalb County Housing Authority. This particular program, when we started talking about it, we asked Sergeant Leaverton to research it. He sent out a notice through the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police on their listserv, and we had two communities respond to his inquiry, and that was Oak Park and Elgin. And they both had success with the program, were excited with the program. They had officers, several residents in the towns, and spoke very highly of it. What happens in this program is the city purchases a vehicle or a residence using TIF funds, and then if it's a multi-unit unit, we would hope to convert it back to a single-family residence to lower density in the neighborhood. Or we can buy a single-family residence and do any needed repairs and renovation to the property. The idea is to, there's several, and that is to use this property as a example to other residents in the area on how their properties can look, hopefully motivate some to enhance their properties, and help raise the property values in that area. The other is through foreclosures. If there's some foreclosures in the area, we could look for a foreclosed residence, whatever fits our particular need as far as dollars and also location. And again, we would be looking at either TIF 1 or TIF 2. And you received maps, I don't know how easily you can read these, but basically we are talking the black, and there's so many boundaries in TIF 1 and TIF 2, I'm sorry, but for the public, I can't describe this because there's, they're jagged boundaries. But then, right below, I believe, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, but basically TIF 2 goes down to around Taylor Street, a little west of First Street. There's a little portion that goes west of First, a little portion that goes south of Taylor. And then a lot of the older neighborhoods like Pleasant Street, State Street, North 10th over in that area. But again, there's much greater area that it covers. So we would look to place an officer and his family in that residence. That officer, ideally, what we would do is we would have an officer that would work flexible hours, he would work with community groups in the area, neighborhood groups, schools in the area, patrol parks on a regular basis. He would be responsible for monitoring crime in that specific area and working with neighbors at resolving neighborhood issues. It can also be a wonderful conduit for helping citizens access needed social services, especially our seniors, if through talking with neighbors they find a senior in need, and he will know of various social service agencies that can help the seniors. And if they haven't accessed services, he can help with that. I think that pretty well covers it. This is, you know, in essence, this is really, I think, one of the prime examples of community policing and getting closer to the residents and the neighborhoods. We've looked at different ways of trying to accomplish this, and I think this is one worth trying. We could try it in one neighborhood, and if we're not happy with the results, we can sell the property and move on. But I'm very hopeful that this will have a lot of positive feedback. As you recall, we continue to receive very positive feedback on our walk patrols and our bike patrols, and this has just taken it to the next level.
Thank you, Chief. I think this is exactly the kind of thing that I know that our task force on quality and safe housing is talked about. I would hope that we would bring this forward and let them discuss that, because they would know where the neighborhoods are and involve them. I mean, this is exactly the kind of thing we're talking about in terms of it. So I think this is a great thing to bring to the task force.
That's our plan, is to take that to them, time in putting this together, and time dictated with the budget season coming up on us so quickly, we wanted you to have this information so that you were aware of it and weren't caught off guard by it. And now we'll take it to the task force and discuss it with them.
Yeah, and I'm sure that this isn't just, we just throw a dart at a neighborhood, that we look at the crime statistics, we look at the code enforcement issues, and look at all those kinds of things.
Absolutely.
I think it's a great program to start to look at and to begin discussion. I'm glad it was brought forward to the council here tonight. Other comments or questions? Ms. Verbic?
Yes, hi, Bill. Well, I think it sounds like a win-win situation. I bet all of us can think of one or two houses in our own areas that, first of all, we'd like to see that house get fixed up, and you're sitting there and you're thinking the chances of it ever happening are so nil because they've been sitting there like that for two, three years. So I only see that some of the things that we're going to have to look at is, well, I shouldn't say "we" because I won't be here, but that the council will have to look at is if this is how we want to use TIF funds, because there's so many uses that all of a sudden the hands in the pot for many different things. And then they brought up about, would the council have any input as to what area that we might start in, or would that just be a staff decision? And then, I didn't see it in our background material, but the media reported that this then might necessitate the need for an additional patrol officer.
Right.
So this gentleman that might be currently a patrol officer would be taken off of that duty because this situation would require too much of his time. Is that correct?
Right. And we can enter, again, the ideal is to have an officer work that specific area of town, but, you know, keep in mind, even, you know, his hours will be flexible, and that's what, you know, we need the hours to be flexible, but he can't work that area So in order for him to be flexible and stay in that area, you know, ideally, you hire an additional officer. But if we can't do that right away, we can start the program, you know, with using existing personnel, and it's going to take some time to purchase the house, to do repairs possibly on the house, to get the program moving, you know, and then we can take it to that next level.
Well, I mean, I think everybody thinks it's true. If you have, you start fixing up a house or two in a neighborhood, it seems to multiply, people seem to take more pride, and then having a police officer present makes a gigantic statement. Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you. I too am very interested in this. I too agree with the concept of having our police in our city and the community wherever possible. One of the questions I had from someone who raised it, and I'll just raise it as something to gather data as we bring this out and start to talk about it, is the number of our current police force that are resident in the city, just in general, see where we are and how many are resident in the city. I had the same question about this being an additional position, and it sounded like ideally it would be additional, but that'll be a budgetary issue, so.
Exactly.
And we're all understanding that now. I appreciate that. The other thing is that I heard from, you know, and I certainly appreciate getting information from other communities about how effective this is. As far as deliverables and accountability or measure, they say they're delighted or something, but do they have, I wonder if they have data that supports what the implication is? Crime rates went down, calls went down, this happened, blah, 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 you know, the difficult things that we'd be interested in seeing. I think if they have such things, that too would be helpful. And if they're promoting police in their community, I wonder what other steps they may be doing in addition to this. This is one house in one area, which is a start, but it's one house in one area of the city. So what we can do to help safety is certainly, I'm going to be very interested in supporting this if we can find a good way to make this happen. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Neener?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment likewise, that it looks upon being a very favorable program, something definitely to take a look at. To get a better understanding of how the individual works, would the officer be assigned generally then to that zone? He'd work more or less the zones, which is all the neighborhoods above and beyond, maybe. I guess, how do you define a neighborhood? Would that be that entire zone then?
No, no. And for the listening public, we have the city divided in three zones, and this would be a sub-zone of one of the existing zones. So it would be a smaller geographic area for him to concentrate on.
And I was wondering also, in other communities where this has been implemented, has there been any, I guess, coordination then with maybe other similar social service agencies and coordination, as well as the possibility of bringing in, I guess, other nonprofit charitable organizations to assist in some way, shape, or form or other in financing and servicing?
Not for the residents, but the, working with the social service agencies are definitely an integral part of this in the geographic area that he's working in.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Do we need formal direction on this, or I think we have direction just to move forward, and we're going to bring it to the task force?
We'll thank the task force for further discussion, and then we'll proceed from there.
Proceed from there. Any other comments?
I will say that for FY '12, this expense will be part of our budget discussions in the TIF fund. You'll see how that's weaved in.
Okay.
In the event that this purchase occurs in FY '12.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
The next consideration is of a levy correction identified by the Army Corps of Engineers. Mr. Mauer.
Let me start off by saying DeKalb's levy is in excellent condition for flood protection purposes and protecting properties adjacent to the river. So what we have before us tonight is what has been identified by the Corps of Engineers as more of a maintenance issue, or preventative maintenance issue, as they call a vegetative clear zone in and about the levy boundaries, which has been rather new to us in public works, as we have for decades maintained the levy and been proud of the work we've done in maintaining the levy in its present status. And now we're finding there is more stringent application of what we have on the land side of the levy. We've always been well-protected with the, and done maintenance inside the levy banks next to the river's edge and on the crown. But the latest of the last 18, 24 months, we've been flagged for improvements or vegetation that needs to be cleared on the land side or the private owner's side of the levy. So herein is the dilemma of what next to do to make us acceptable in the Corps' program of annual levy inspections. There is a division of the Corps of Engineers Emergency Management Division that monitors work of all levies in and about Illinois and nationwide. And so they're applying this vegetative clear zone nationwide, and I think it's more of a reaction to the middle 2000, well, 2005 with Katrina and the disasters that occurred around the Gulf and the levies of the Gulf, especially New Orleans, and the breaching of the levies in those locations. So we have been flagged in two inspections, as an East Bank inspection separate from a West Bank inspection. We actually have minimally acceptable conditions of the East Bank, which would be from Route 38 to Hopkins Park. Levies that are along private properties of Thornbrook and on up towards the sanitary district into Hopkins Park is the east side. And the west side would be along NIU side and the north 40 of NIU, and properties of Tilton Park, Joanne Lane, and such, up to the footbridge in Hopkins Park, that being called the west side. The west side is the one that's today out of compliance, and so we would, in the event of a federal disaster of flooding consequences where we had maybe a breach of our levy, then we would not be able to access federal funding, at least on the west side bank, for restoration and repair at federal cost. We'd have to do that on our own. The east side, as I mentioned, has minimally acceptable rating, and it seems the biggest hurdle is for removal of some trees in backyards of Thornbrook Road. We've met with those folks in December, laid out the facts that we knew them from the findings of the Corps, and here we are today to determine if we should have any expenditure of city funds to remediate some of that problem with vegetation that's still within the clear zone. Trees in Thornbrook and other areas along the levy, of course, have grown up 20, 30 or more years, and there had not been any real indication from the Corps that these were problems. But in their 2009 ruling nationwide is that this must be an area of clear vegetation, and I think some of the sketches in the back indicate the limits in terms of what that should look like. Essentially, the trunk of a tree on the land side of the levy, and land side meaning beyond the crown protecting along the river and extending beyond the slope of that high bank to meet the original ground, you need to go 15 more feet back from that into the land side. So a trunk of a tree can be no closer than that 15 feet from the toe of the levy, and there should be actually a vertical clearance of about eight feet at that point, 15 feet off the toe of the levy. I guess I would tell you there appears to be no degrading of the community's protection provided by the levy if the city elects to do no undertaking of corrective work, but we would give up our opportunity for federal assistance if there would be a catastrophic breach or failure. The Corps would still help in our usual flood fighting, which they've done years and years, is to supply sandbags, and in cases when we're in a real pinch, to provide these large pumps that would pump water from behind the levy into the river. So I laid out several alternatives and options. One would be, as I just mentioned, to do no corrective work. That turns away the possibility of federal funding assistance for future problems that we may have. We've been 53 years in existence with our levy and really haven't anywhere breached our levy other than we've had overtopping. Another alternative is to maybe just make ourselves compliant on the east bank. Of the trees I mentioned, there's about 30 trees in the backyards of maybe 10, 12 Thornbrook Road residents. That would get us back into full compliance essentially on the east bank, and then maybe chip away over years of time as funding's allotted for corrective work on the west bank, as we're already non-compliant and urgency isn't really of the order here. Of course, and then we could do the last alternative, most expensive, which is to make repairs and corrective actions on both banks more immediate, which is something in the order of over $100,000 for the west bank improvements, and as I mentioned, the tree clearing is around $35,000. Of course, we have no year-to-year annual maintenance budget for such a thing. We do have some line item of cleaning and clearing that we do, which is generally our mowing maintenance and some riprap repairs of bank sloughing, and in some cases, we do some tree clearing and some spraying, controlled spraying to keep down woody vegetation. So I guess I would open it up to your questions and your guidance on what to do next.
Thank you, Joel. I have a few comments. First of all, this is very near and dear to my heart. I live in the flood plain, and I've had six to eight inches of water go through my first floor. Not my basement, folks, my first floor. So this is very near and dear to me, and I also want to declare, I don't have, I'm not affected by this. I don't have any trees in my backyard that are impacted on this. But I tend to be of the nature that we've had 50 years of holding back every kind of flood that I can think of you could live through, short of possibly a tornado maybe going through and breaching the levy. We're certainly not having hurricanes. And to spend $100,000 to comply if in fact it's not going to impact, the individual homeowner would not be impacted, should my house flood, my health insurance, my flood insurance is still okay. Correct.
That's correct.
Now, what if the levy breached behind my home? Would my flood insurance still be in effect?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
I mean, of course, you're probably more likely to, you know, immediately have a claim. You're going to have floodwaters where it began.
But in other words, that wouldn't be exempt either. So in essence, the only thing if we're willing to spend $100,000 on now would be to remove these trees.
Trees and fences, there's some obstructing.
That are on there.
Swimming pool in one location, too.
That haven't necessarily impeded or been of a devalue, what's the word I want to use, to stop flooding. They certainly haven't gotten in the way of flooding in those neighborhoods. So I, you know, I'll open it up here for discussion, but I think there's a better use of $100,000 because the Army Corps of Engineers changed its mind after 53 years. So I'll open it up. Ron?
Yes, I guess I would agree with Chris here on the majority of that. I had the opportunity to take a look at the particular area along the back of the houses along Thornbrook, which is on the east bank or what Joel is talking about, and I took some pictures out there. I don't know if Jeff in the control room could maybe pop up one of those pictures or so, come up. You can see some of the backyards and those large trees to the west there looking towards the campus would basically all come down, particularly the big pine trees out closest to the levy there, most likely because they're easily within the 15-foot from the toe of the slope, as well as the hangover at 15-foot. And as Joel indicated, you have to have a vertical clearance at that 15-foot line of seven to eight feet of clearance. They can overhang, but they have to be cleared. And as you go further west, there's additional trees, some larger trees, in fact, probably some large old trees that maybe was there prior to the levy system, is still existing there. These have been there, obviously, for a good number of years. They just weren't planted in the last five or 10 years. They've been there for many years. All of these would probably be removed likewise, as well as the fence would have to be removed. And one of the rationale, I guess, or the reasoning for this clearance is to provide access along the backside or the land side of the levy during storm events, or for access to get out there for some purpose or another. And I don't know if, you know, along the back of these homes, whether or not that would ever be utilized. It hasn't been in the last 55 years. The line here on this particular picture, about where that little fire pit is, is approximately the line, I understand. There was some white paint left on the ground there when we were out there the other day and that Joel had laid out. So some of those trees would go, which the owners of that particular property indicated they probably wouldn't have that great of an opposition to those two or three trees on their property. But that's as you go further west, there are several trees, and particularly impacts upon backyards. I believe there's probably even a little work shed behind one of those houses there that needs to be relocated. That big cluster of trees right there is probably one of the clusters that was probably there before the levy was even constructed, part of the old riverbed, and they most likely would have to go, according to Joel. Anyway, you can see a couple of trees have already been removed there, probably maybe from either the ash borer or maybe for other reasons. But that whole area to the east there, there's the shed in the background that most likely would have to be relocated, as well as a good clearance of all that existing growth would go. What's ironic about this unilateral, I guess, application of this 15-foot line is if you were to go and look south from Lucinda Avenue down to College Avenue, Joel was telling me, which I wasn't aware of, that that section of the river is not a part of the Corps' jurisdiction because apparently they didn't do any work in that area at the time that the levies were built. And if you were to look, I guess I didn't include pictures there, but on the inside of the stream banks there, there's tremendous amount of growth and trees along that area, and, you know, apparently that's okay, as well as there's other areas along the river to the south likewise. But any trees within the inside of the levies, you can understand that any of those trees that were there probably should be removed so that it doesn't impede the flow of the river and the flood at the time when there is flood condition. In fact, many people probably remember 25 years or so ago when there was a large massive clearing of all the growth within the inside of the levies that caused a considerable concern, but really was a needed maintenance item that had been ignored for many years, and that definitely had made some impedance to the capacity of that levy system to carry the floodwaters. And after that, the flood and the elevations has been much better lower than what they would have been had not that clearance been made. Similar to like a conduit or a pipe, if you put some impediment within a pipe, it's going to reduce the amount of flow that can get through there, and that's the same thing true with the levies, particularly on the inside. On the outside, I have difficulty with understanding the rationale of that being applied, you know, sort of unilaterally across the board without any exception, and particularly without any recognition of particularly the mature trees. I can understand possibly some of the fences, some of those instructions, that wouldn't be all that difficult probably to relocate, but some of the mature trees and the green, the greenery and all that is what I guess bothers me. And I know I've looked at the rigs with Joel, he's provided the information, and that to get a variance, you know, administratively in accordance with their guidelines, which are possible, but the chance of, in this case, for the vegetative growth with which they specifically indicate is not a reason for not complying basically in the standard. But I do believe that the city should maybe, if they do elect to do anything, at least would be to appeal federally this unilateral application of this rig and to call upon our federal senators or congressmen to get involved, because the Army Corps of Engineers is pretty much an autonomous agency, and they only respond basically to the federal government and to the legislators back there in Washington. So I would think at least an initial effort should be made to make a request for a variance, and particularly specifically for the mature trees, et cetera, and that, and then maybe go about it. If we don't get some type of variance, then maybe come back and consider the mayor's suggestion here to maybe forego that possibility of missing out someday in the future with federal assistance that maybe would be required if you had a breach of the levy or something like that. Your $100,000 today could probably grow to a sufficient amount for that future repair cost that might be needed in the future, if it ever does have. The levy system has been here for 55-plus years, and other than maintenance on it, at least in my understanding, my experience, has been minimal, probably at most, relatively speaking. So that's my thoughts.
Other thoughts? Tom? Tom?
Just a couple of follow-up questions, Joel, thanks. The second ward is heavily impacted by what's happening with the levies and they've had a couple of folks at least question what's happening here. And I think you've explained it fairly well as far as the minimal impact regarding liability and I think that's what people are looking for. If it does not impact their flood insurance, which is what I understand the answer is it does not, even if there's a breach. That's one issue.
Correct.
The avoidance of a breach, I guess, is the primary concern of the people that I've talked to and even improvements to the levy, which are, these are maintenance items, not real improvements, but there's certainly a strong interest in what long-term, long-range plans there are about improvements. And in that regard, as we think about the possibility of dropping, the word here is dropout of the federal levy assistance program, as to what that means and what does that mean, if anything, to any future grants and/or work that could be done to improve the levies to a greater extent than they are now. So I'd like some comments on that. Does this put us in any jeopardy of other federal grant money or any other long-term assistance that they may offer us?
Yeah, I don't think it has any impact on any other federal grant money like transportation funds or airport use funds.
No, I'm sorry. I meant specifically related to levy projects that may come down the road.
I'm not aware of that answer. I'm not sure of that answer. I know we have in the pipeline through our lobbyist, Water Resources, the BRDA Assistance Grant, and I can't think of the other acronyms, but we've had for years requests to repair these low-dip areas of, we've known of overtopping. And we've not been successful as nationwide, the program not really been active with earmarks being in and out with the Congress. So we have not experienced any effects of being out of compliance at this point. And I know that we in PoliQuarks will continue to maintain the levy in as good standing as it is today. It's just this woody clear zone that we're not fully compliant, so I don't have all the answers you need on that.
Okay. Well, I guess I would ask for us to try and do, question that about what the impact is long-term. I guess the other question becomes if this continues, and I would agree with Alderman Naylor's comments about a variance, if there is a variance, that puts us back in good standing, if you will, that would seem to be worthwhile if it's not too much effort. And the other question would be if this continues this way, how do we, how do we get out of this circumstance or does it just continually get worse until we're forced to do something or how does this play out? Or do we know?
Well, we wouldn't have annual Corps of Engineers inspections going forward if we're not going to be compliant. They just don't run their checklist through us. And of course, what they would expect, we maintain our levy, you know, for our own protection of our citizens. So it would just be on our own for identifying hazards that may influence the integrity of the levy.
Do we find their inspection process to be of value to us?
Not greatly.
No. Well, I don't know, so ask the question. If that is helpful, do they find things that we don't see?
They've done some good idea type remediation efforts or suggestions and we've done those. For instance, any pipe penetration through the levy, that's like a discharge pipe running from our storm sewer system in our streets into the levy or through the levy, then they want to know if there's any disjointed pipe near the levy that would then allow water or soil intrusion into those pipes. So we've, we've done all the televising to assure ourselves that we're, we have good integrity of pipes in and out. That did cost some money, but it was probably well worth it to have peace of mind about that. And they've, they've helped us identify some fences that were truly out of compliance of where they were located should there ever need to be a city vehicle that needs to access the top of the levy. And we have at times driven on the top of the levy to place our, our big trash pumps for pumping out in flood events. So yes, you do need some very good access at the top. It's about a ten-foot wide top of the levy that you can drive on and keeping things out of the way, whether it's woody items or trees or fences or something else, even signs, that's a good thing.
Well, I understand that a hundred thousand dollars is certainly something that's not budgeted and would be a real strain. Just trying to understand what the implications are and if we have problems downstream from this, that we, you know, we at least have an understanding of what we're, what we're doing if, if we don't do this and we forego the inspections and we forego a federal assistance and making sure that that has no impact on future grants or improvements to the levy that we may enjoy in the future. So those would be my concerns.
Ms. Burby?
Oh, well, I'll be redundant by saying that that was my same question on what are the repercussions of dropping out of this federal levy assistance program and I guess we're going to look into that maybe, kind of debatable. But what can we do to, what does a city do or what can they do to see that people are not erecting structures such as fences and sheds and so forth within that zone that they're not supposed to? Because I guess, I don't know how much of a problem it is, but I guess theoretically if I see my neighbor has a fence there, then maybe I should be able to put a fence there, too.
Well, we do have the fence permit process, so I have actually seen permits come through over decades of time here and prevented some that are going to be too, too close and encroaching. But besides that, you know, if someone wants to sneak one in, I guess our, our mowing maintenance person would tell us, yeah, there's something unusual here happening. And that was the one value of our core annual inspection is at least once a year, our street superintendent, myself and others, would walk the levy and note of any major consequences like that that occurred over the past year.
So there's no like permitting process or anything to prevent that?
The city owns easement rights to tell homeowners to remove stuff or prevent, you know, encroachments of fences. So I guess it's by city actions of people being compliant with their permitting that they bring in a permit. They understand we have a process and that floodplain obstructions are not allowed. So we, we do take care to watch that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Dave?
Well, maybe Patty Daley can get us some federal money. That's what I'm going to hold out for.
Yeah, she's been trying. She's been trying for this Water Resource Development Act funds that would at least do this improvement at the crown level that would be uniform and not have a dip in it.
I encourage you to keep trying and try to get a home run there because if I was in a home that got flooded because the levy breached, because we're trying to save some money now, I think I'd be screaming even if my insurance did cover it. So let's try to do what we can to bolster the levy. That's my opinion.
Ron?
I just wanted to further comment. You know, I would envision if, at least initially get a variance for some timing on being able to maybe ultimately comply over time and working with the residents along these areas to clear the embankments and the, at least down to the toe of the levy and then ultimately work out to the fifteen foot. Because initially, the easement that was conveyed had no prohibition of planting vegetation back on the, at least the outside of the levy. I don't see any prohibition on the initial easement whatsoever saying anything about can't plant vegetative growth or cover on it. So that, you know, to me is one of the issues that people didn't know, we didn't know, the city didn't know and the enforcement. Now, the city has an easement of varying widths across the back of these properties in which, you know, most of the people probably didn't even know where that easement is. Until you go out and lay it out, you wouldn't know that it goes back, whatever that is, a hundred feet off the center line of the levy, basically, or the center line of the stream there. So you, you know, unless somebody would tell them or they would have had that marked out, they wouldn't have known that there was an easement. And then further, the easement language doesn't prohibit the planning or doesn't prohibit adversely anything that I see on it as far as fences and that unless Joel knows something otherwise on. So, you know, that's another issue, at least I think that, you know, they aren't necessarily at fault for doing that because there was no prohibition of it and it's been perfectly fine for basically the last fifty-five years out there. If I recall, none of the previous, well, maybe in recent times, that these annual inspections cited the trees on the outside of the levy. Typically, they always cited the ones that are on the inside of the levy and all of the groundhog holes and some of the other drainage structures, but I don't recall anything ever being said about any of the growth and the encroachments on the outside of the levy.
Direction to the staff? Anybody want to make a motion or give some direction? I didn't hear a unanimous outcry to, to spend a hundred thousand dollars and come into compliance. You had some suggestions, Tom?
Yeah, I guess to follow up on Alderman Naylor's comment about the variance approach, I would make a motion that we at least move forward with attempting to do that, get a variance that would give us a number of years to get into compliance. That's logical to me. And I would like to follow up on the question I asked about what the implications are for further grants and improvements to the levy if we drop out of this assistance. If it, if there is no impact long-term, I would like to understand that. I think the people in the second ward certainly would like to understand that.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Simpson seconds. Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Simpson.
Post Katrina, I have nothing but thinly veiled contempt for the Army Corps of Engineers. They're bullies and I have to disagree with Councilman Naylor. I didn't realize it was some part of the kish that the Army Corps of Engineer had said was not their responsibility. I believe they have the authority at any point in time to decide it's their responsibility at their whim, just like I view this pruning of tree thing as part of their whim. But my real concern, and I know several of you have mentioned it, and I know it's been said to us that individual people's flood insurance will not be affected by this, where does it say that at? That's all I'm saying. I mean, I'm not saying it's not true, but where does it say if we cross the Army Corps of Engineers, flood insurance is not violated in some way?
Very good question as a flood insurance homeowner.
Yeah, I've called, I guess, the state's, one of their highest officials to know, to know what practices are for flood insurance and floodplain issues. And the gentleman I've spoken to, I've known for, what, twenty years in the business and he's, he says there is no consequences of, it's like if, if your levy wasn't there, you have the same risk as if this levy, as it today stands, is in place, provides the same risk. Why I say that is because flood insurance is based on a one-hundred-year level of protection from flooding. A levy needs to provide one-hundred-year level of protection before you can have reductions in a premium for flood insurance if you live behind the levy. Our levy apparently in fifty-three years ago was only built to standards of, I guess, a fifty-year level of protection, so we've always been mapped as if the floodplain lies in the mayor's backyard or in those other backyards that are adjacent to levy. It's not, not that the floodplain boundary stops at the levy crown because our levy height isn't, isn't of the one-hundred-year level. So that's how they explain it to me.
And, you know, I further add that there are two different agencies, Army Corps of Engineers and FEMA, that manages the flood insurance program and Army Corps is concerned with the operation and maintenance of the levy system. Sort of two different issues there, at least the way I'm thinking of it. And he was saying the same thing about based upon the one-hundred-year flood. And in fact, the property owner that some of those trees were shown where the fire pit was, they told me, advised me that they don't even have flood insurance because they weren't required to purchase flood insurance because their house is up high enough, up in the bank and up the hill there, that they weren't required to have flood insurance when they bought the home three.